Dear Lord, thank you for all the treasures that you've given us, for all the blessings, for our food, water, shelter, for the city staff and administration, for our fellow council members, for our great country, our state, our city, and for life itself. Please continue to bless and protect this city and all who live, work, and play here. And particularly watch out for those in need, for the hungry, the thirsty, the lonely, the imprisoned, the fearful. And we ask you to place your protection over this city as this winter storm approaches. And finally, please help us to be good and wise stewards tonight and always. We ask all of these things in the name of the Father and Son and the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Amen.
I'll call this meeting to order if you'll rise for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll move to number three, our work session. Items included under work session are intended to provide opportunities for city council to study and discuss various issues and gather and analyze information. Council will not take formal action on matters presented at a work session, but may direct staff to place items relating to the matter on future agendas for formal consideration. A, receive a report regarding public library policies and American Library Association best practices, library manager.
Good afternoon, council and mayor. My name is Mercedes Franks. I'm the library director for the GDB McDonald Public Library. And tonight I will be giving a presentation about the library accreditation and best practices. Accreditation is authorized by the Texas State Library and Archives Commission. It is based on quantitative standards that the library reports on its annual report. Takes into consideration such things as funding for the local government, hours of operation, the number of items per capita a library has. And accreditation is important because it determines whether or not a library is eligible for grants, to participate in statewide lending programs, and discounts on databases. But tonight's presentation will mainly focus on library policies and best practices, how we arrive at those policies. So the public library is, follows best practices as determined by the American Library Association and Texas Library Association. As you can see, we have several different policies listed here. These are not all the policies that the library has. But the first two policies that we want to talk about is the collection development policy. This policy is what every library should have, according to American Library Association and Texas Library Association. They dictate such things as, or help guide such things as, how to include materials in your collection, criteria for selection, following review journals, budget, things of that nature. And then there's also reconsideration policy for any maybe concerns about collections in, an item in the collection. Next, we have the privacy policy, which is another policy that every library should have. Again, being concerned with how libraries manage people's information, as well as the resources that they access. So that's another very important policy that all libraries should have. And then we have patron behavior policy, an attended child policy, computer use policy, and borrowing policies. All those speak to the fact that libraries are here to provide access to information, whether it's in book form or technology form. And we want to create policies that allow for access, but also take into consideration that we are providing services for the entire community. So providing a safe environment for everybody to come in and utilize the library. The foundation of a public library is, first and foremost, access to information and the freedom to choose what to read, and again, access to information and privacy. All policies, as we mentioned, are, were established in the 70s when our library was first created, and those are guided by the principles of the American Library Association and the Texas Library Association. Both of these are professional organizations that many librarians are members of. And these, based on research, best practices, they have a list of policies that libraries should have, and some guidance on what to include in a good policy. And they always remember and remind librarians that while they, the overarching theme is access to information and the services that a library provides, each local community is responsible for how they actually implement the policy. So neither of these organizations dictate what goes specifically into a policy, rather just the philosophy of access to materials. Locally, our policies were written when the library was created. We do occasionally implement new policies. So for instance, with COVID, we, we started getting, we started purchasing hotspots. So we had to write a policy or adapt our current policy to include who would be eligible to borrow a hotspot, how, the terms of that, access to the hotspot, things of that nature. So the, locally, the library staff, myself and the assistant director, will review the policies. We also look at the standards of the American Library Association and the Texas Library Association. We contact other libraries. So anytime we are thinking of changing a policy or issues come up, we, we call other libraries, especially Lufkin and Dieball. Basically, we're looking at other libraries in our, they're similar to our community, same demographics, or similar demographics, because we want to know, how are they addressing some of these concerns? So we take all those things into consideration in our local community, and we will update policies. And then we, the approval of the policies goes to our, goes to our Director of Community Services, who is our supervisor. And, and so that's how those policies are, are created or revised. The purpose of policies, sometimes we get asked, why does a library need policies? Well, this helps guide the services that you provide to your patrons, making sure that access to materials or services is consistent, provides a rationale for why you do whatever it is that you're doing. And it just helps to ensure uniformity in, in your operations. And policies are updated regularly. Each different policy has a schedule for, for review, and then just sometimes as things change, emerging trends, we will look at a policy. And as we mentioned even, I've mentioned a lot, ALA and TXLA, but those aren't the only factors that go into our, our local policies for our public library. We consider collaborations with our partners, who do we potentially want to partner with? Who are we currently partnering with? What kind of programs in those partnerships do we want to offer for our community? They also, we take into consideration equitable distribution of limited resources. We do want to make sure that we are doing that as fairly as possible with the limited resources that we have. So sometimes those considerations drive our policies, which then drive our procedures. And emergency, emerging, I'm sorry, emerging library trends. We mentioned COVID encourages to update our lending policies, but other things may happen as well. Sometimes there are new technologies. When we adapted eBooks, we had to update our, our collection development policy, our borrowing policies. So things like that influence how we write our policies. And first and foremost, knowing our community. We, even though we consult with other libraries in the state, and also TXLA and ALA, we still take into consideration our community and the needs of our community, because we're here ultimately to serve everyone here and make sure that everyone feels welcome at our facilities, and that they feel that, that the library is here to serve them, regardless of their needs. Do you all have any questions for me?
I think, first I'd like to have any public comment. Anybody want to speak from the, from the audience? Okay. Any, any?
I have something.
Oh, do you? Sure, could you approach the, would you come to the front, please?
My name is Chris Englerd. I always have a little red flag that goes up when I hear the word equitable instead of equal. Maybe you could explain in your presentation why it is an equitable access instead of equal availability?
Thank you.
That's a very good distinction between equitable and equal. Depending on the service, sometimes it's not possible to have an exact same service for everyone, or we, we just, we do our best to make sure that, with the limited resources, that we are doing the best to grant access to, to our community. Not every service is going to be the exact same, based on maybe where they live as far as, so for instance, curbside service was something that, that is helpful for some people, but maybe not necessarily for others. So we try to adapt those. So I'm not sure if that answers the question.
Sure. Yeah, great, thank you. Council, any comments or questions?
Just, well, is there anything in the presentation that states what type of reading material are you allowed to have in the library?
Yes, sir. Our collection development policy, which all libraries should have, outlines criteria for selection. So first of all, it outlines who's gonna, who is authorized to add materials to the collection. So in our policy, it's the library manager or somebody designated. So I have several selectors. Then we look at review materials. So we have magazines such as the American Library Journal, School Library Journal, and Hornbook, that, that provide reviews of many materials, but not every material. So we consult those and see what those recommendations are. We don't buy everything that is recommended. We, again, looking at our community, seeing what, what we feel would be of use for our community, given our limited resources. We can't buy every recommended book. And we also, and even if we do purchase something, we take into consideration where in our collection it should be. So it might be recommended for a particular level, and we might decide, no, our community perhaps needs to have it in a different, different level of the library. We also look at budget. So we get a lot of requests for e-audiobooks, and those are wonderful, popular items, but they're sometimes extremely expensive. So even if we think there'll be a widespread appeal, we just have limited resources, and so we have to make those hard choices as to, do we get every single bestseller in a particular format? Sometimes we don't. Gaps in the collection, so the collection development policy also helps us identify, helps us look at our, at our collection. Are there fiction materials that we need, or nonfiction materials do we need? It also outlines such things as a format. So we wouldn't buy a collection of VHS tapes because nobody has, or not many people have VHS players anymore. So we take all those factors into consideration. When we choose something and there's a list of criteria that we should be considering, not every material that is added to the collection will hit every single one of those criteria, but we do take all those things into consideration. Widespread appeal, so if somebody wants something on a very esoteric topic, and we don't think anybody else will, would want to read it, we probably wouldn't purchase it, again, because we want to be good stewards of our budget. And, and so we would look for another possibility, maybe interlibrary loan, or something that's more economical. So we do have the collection development policy that, that guides us in our, in our selection criteria, as well as donations that we accept.
And also, you mentioned different levels of the library. Is that where it's partially hidden from the public, or hidden from the public?
Oh, no, sir, I'm sorry. We have a juvenile collection, young adult collection, and then we have the adult collection. And so that's, that's what I meant.
But everybody have access to all of those levels, right?
Yes.
Okay. Now, if, who determines what material to remove if there is someone opposed to that material being in the library?
Sure. Every collection development policy should have, as part of its policy, a reconsideration policy, a process. So it's, it, there's a form that, that is completed by somebody that is, is concerned, and then it goes to a committee made up of the Friends of the Library members. But the main thing with that is that there is a process that, that we go through, and that is to ensure that we are considering the collection development pros, policy for this particular material.
Okay, you mentioned Friends of the Library. I don't want to know any name of any books or whatever, but has there lately been requests to move certain material out of the library in Nacogdoches?
I had a couple of people express concern about a particular book. They came in, spoke to me, we, I gave them the reconsideration policy, and they never did submit it. So nobody else has objected.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
First of all, I just wanted to say I really appreciate you going above and beyond to make sure we get grants for our library. I know that's something that not all librarians in smaller towns do, and really appreciate it, and you've been successful over the years doing it. I really appreciate it. I also appreciate the creativity that you and the staff have for engaging young people, and that's evident compared to other libraries and cities our size. The fact that we even have a wonderful library is really a great asset for our town. The review, the review committee made up of Friends of the Library, how is that selected? Do Friends of the Library choose the review committee, or?
It's the board members.
The board members.
And different libraries have different configurations of how they do that. And we called several other libraries back when we were reviewing the policy a few years ago, and most recently, and it, it runs the gamut from staff only being the reconsideration committee, to a board, or in our case, a friends group. Or sometimes it's city staff other than, in addition to library staff. So it does run the gamut.
So if somebody does want something reconsidered, whether it should be in the library, or whether it should be out in public or whatever, that's not a terrible thing, is it? I mean, is it a fairly easy review, or? Tell us about that. I mean, should people be afraid to ask to have something considered, or?
Well, first of all, we welcome recommendations, and we welcome concerns from the public. That is what we're here for. I would never, ever shy away from speaking to a customer about something that they have, because we want people to feel that this, this is their library, not to feel that it's their library, it is their library. And so they should come and express concerns. But the library, when I speak to people that might be concerned about a particular material, is for everyone. And so not every material in the collection will be appropriate for everyone. But people should be able to see themselves in the collection at some point. And that, the representation, being able to see yourself in the collection, it, it matters, because we're here to serve the entire community. So that was, that is the first and foremost thing that I want to convey. And again, that we, we want to hear what people have to say. And I will always reiterate to someone, first of all, thank people for coming in and being aware of the, of what the library has to offer coming in. That's what we need, an involved citizenry. So if somebody comes in and they have a concern about something, we, we discuss what their concern is. Sometimes it's a matter of maybe they want something else, and happy to, to accommodate them. And the, the emphasis is always that every person has the right to choose what to read or what to access for themselves, and that extends to other people as well. And so that is respect for their autonomy and the freedom to choose, intellectual freedom is a mainstay of, of all libraries. But, but yes, we welcome questions, concerns, and I, I hope people feel that, that they can utilize the library that way.
Good. Mr. Anderson?
I just, I, I spent a lot of time as a child in the basement across the street in the original library, going as far through the children's collection as I could. And my daughter has spent a lot of time in the current location. And mainly just want to, want to thank you and your staff for doing such a remarkable job with maintaining and expanding what I think is a really crucial resource for our community.
Thank you.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes, mayor. I just, I want to reiterate what, how impressed I consistently am with you and with your staff, with the service that you guys provide, our community. And I also loved your explanation just now about representation and people being able to see themselves in their library. So thank you very much for that.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for your report. We appreciate you being with us tonight.
Thank you.
We'll call B, receiver presentation and hold a discussion regarding a low-income housing tax credit program, economic development director.
Okay. Hello, mayor and council. Larissa Philpott, I'm your economic development director. I am here to talk about these housing tax credit applications. I think the community has been speaking a lot about them. We began this journey in December when we were notified of several potential low-income housing tax credit applications. I'm going to try very hard to introduce acronyms. There are a lot of lengthy terms in here, so I apologize, I will use some acronyms. Low-income housing tax credits, we abbreviate to LIHTC, and even shorter HTC, that's just easier to say. So we received several notifications from these potential HTC developments. The city manager and staff scheduled visits with the mayor and mayor pro tem, they kind of traded off. And the council member whose ward these developments lie in, and that was council, council member Bellinger, we met with each one of them virtually to just kind of do an initial introduction. And throughout the process, we've tried to keep the public informed as the issue has evolved. We've gotten more information over time. And tonight, my job is to explain the HTC program to you, to introduce it to you and to the public, and just give you a very high-level bit of information about the applications we've received. Tonight, you will not vote. This is just a workshop, just for information. So this is a congressionally created program under the Reagan administration. It dates back to 1986, and it actually was created to, as an incentive to developers to build affordable housing through a federal income tax credit. It is how 90% of affordable housing is built in the United States today. It essentially replaced the Section 8 housing project system that a lot of folks are familiar with. It is entirely different than Section 8 public housing. The, the tax credit allocation is divided among the states based on population. Texas gets a very large amount, I think it's $83 million a year. In each state, then, it is administered by the state's Department of Housing. So in Texas, that's Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs, another acronym, TDHCA. Then each state creates its own allocation plan within the state. So in, let me talk a little bit about how these credits work. I'm not going to delve deeply in here. I think everybody's eyes would glaze over if we talked about how a tax credit works, but just know that the program functions by providing a tax credit, which then reduces the debt required to finance a development, which then in turn means the developer can charge lower rents than they normally would. We can dive into that later if you guys want to, but that's essentially how it works. So in each state, the, each individual state, the legislature of each state creates a qualified allocation plan, or a QAP. In Texas, they divide that $83 million among regions, and then within each region, these applications that come in are competitively scored. So we compete, or, or applications complete, compete in our region amongst other applications from Angelina County, Shelby County, it's about a 12-county region that runs from Nacogdoches County down south to Newton and Jasper Counties. So just a little bit of information about this point system, I'm just going to outline some of it. It provides points for amenities like hard surface floors, double vanity bathrooms, covered parking, some exterior appearances. It also sets some income levels and some rent levels. You get more points if you target lower income levels and lower rents. Many in the community have asked why Nacogdoches is so popular for this program this year, and that really comes down to this portion of the qualified allocation plan called the opportunity index and deconcentration factors. So essentially, in Texas, in TDHCA, the philosophy is to spread these developments out throughout the city, but also make sure that they're near schools, jobs, community services. So if your community gets an allocation, a credit allocation, and an application is, is approved for funding in 2022, it's likely that it would not get approved for funding in 2023. They would like to spread them out across the region more evenly. Continuing to move through the point system, you'll see that your support is, is one of the scored categories, that local government support. Traditionally, the state representative's office has, has asked how the city council votes, and we pass those resolutions on to them, so that somewhat does, could affect the state representative's support. They also reach out to community service organizations. I know they've reached out to United Way, asking their support. They also look at the financial feasibility of these. They want to make sure that the projects make sense from a, from a bank and financial standpoint. And then they submit a pre-application, which requires each development to look at the scoring system and tell the state, and honestly, to tell us too, how they think these applications are going to score. how they think these applications are going to score. So that Qualified Allocation Plan functions in a way that lights up some census tracts in any given year. Um, this is dependent, again, on the point categories in that current Qualified Allocation Plan because that can change. When the legislature meets again in twenty-twenty-three, they can change that QAP. Um, historically, the most recent housing tax credit in an area is, is going to kind of black out that area from a tax credit the following year. Um, and really probably, traditionally, it's been five or six years. Um, so you'll see that the system is cyclical. We, we get a bunch of applications in one year and then it's really quiet for five or six years. Um, I think when I was city planner, we would do it probably about every five years. We would get a bunch of applications at once. So you can see on here, the census tract, um, nine-five-oh-five-point-oh-two, which is, um, in council member Bellinger's ward, um, is highlighted there on the screen. And that's the one where all of our applications this year do lie. So I'm going to pause one moment here just to give some statistics about Nacogdoches. We traditionally do these in these tax credit applications. Um, just to highlight another reason why the developers do look at Nacogdoches. You can see we are a lower-income community that, um, does have a fairly high poverty level um, and does have rents that are higher, um, than the state average. Yes, that is affected by the university. Um, and yes, we are working every day to try to get more higher-paying jobs to improve those numbers and to, to make those numbers look better. Um, but this is where, where we stand today. So we do have a bunch of these in town, um, starting back to nineteen ninety-three. Those are the earliest on the list. The Cordova rental units, those are, um, over on Marty Street. In that part of town, there's, there's a bunch right there. Um, Commonwealth Number One and Number Two on Northway Drive. Those were funded back in the nineties. Cypress Ridge, which is on Logan Circle on the southeast part of town. Um, Cardinal Village, moving back north, was founded in two thousand and two along with Spring Hill, which has changed names, but that is the development on East Main Street. Um, if you're headed east, it's at East Main Street in the loop. Vista Pines, um, Nacogdoches Senior Village. Um, I believe those are both senior restricted facilities. One's on Harris Street near the senior center and one's on Park Street. Park Estates is over on Pruitt Hill, kind of moving back towards the center of town. Um, Pine Lake Estates actually was an existing development that received tax credits to renovate in twenty-thirteen. And then Tower Village is a new development that was funded in twenty-thirteen. So the applications we have received in twenty-twenty-two. We initially received notice of five applications, one of, from four different developers, meaning one of those developers submitted two. That developer has since told us, um, that they were pulling out their general application and they were just moving forward with the application for seniors. And so that is Pioneer Crossing for Seniors, um, that you see on the far-right side of, of your, of your screen there. Going to move through these one by one. Um, Reserve at Appleby Sand is of course on Appleby Sand Road. It's got eighty units. It is proposed to be elderly restricted. Um, it is currently zoned R-one, single-family residential. Maroni Park Crossing, and I'll have a map of these in a moment. I just want this chart up while everyone can see it, um, is on Maroni Drive. That one is a nonprofit. Um, it is, they receive extra points for that. Um, they have indicated that they would be paying property taxes, um, even though they are a nonprofit. Um, they're proposing seventy-two low-income units and eighty total units, which means they'd have eight that are, that are typical market-rate units. It, it would be elderly restricted and that property is currently zoned PD Plan Development. Then continuing on, Pinewood Crossing Apartments, also on Maroni Drive. Um, seventy-two units. This one is not age-restricted. It would be, they, they refer to that as general or family style. It is open to anyone. Uh, that meets the, um, income limitations with a expenditure of ten, ten-point-seven million dollars. And that one has a split zoning. And then I mentioned Pioneer Crossing for Seniors, which is also, um, eighty units elderly and, um, at a valuation of eleven million dollars. So looking on this map, I'm going to run back through those again so you can see them. Um, I apologize, we did not have time to update this map, the, to reflect, um, that Pioneer Crossing. The general Pioneer Crossing was removed. But you'll see there are two developments, um, in the center of the map closest to University Drive there. There's Pioneer, Pioneer Crossing North and Pioneer Crossing South. I believe we have them designated as. It is my understanding that Pioneer Crossing for Seniors would be on the Pioneer Crossing South property there. Um, that property is zoned B-two general business, which means multifamily apartments are permitted by right there. Tomorrow, if a developer, um, was not seeking a resolution of support from you and wanted to build multifamily apartments, they could apply for a building permit and, and receive that and, and move on as long as they met all of the city's development requirements. Um, the next property on the list is Pinewood Crossing Apartments. And that one is, you'll see it is split. Part of that is zoned B-two general business, the part that's on the western end. Um, and then part of that is zoned R-one, single-family. These maps are not survey-grade. They were just roughly drawn and submitted to us as part of the application process. So I can't tell you how much of that is zoned R-one and how much is zoned B-two. Um, but I can tell you that it would require a zoning change to utilize any of that property zoned R-one, um, for multifamily apartments. Moving further along, the next item is, um, Maroni Park Crossing, which is on the south side of the street. That is zoned PD, which is Plan Development, which was zoned that way for the Timber Springs Development, um, that has never come to fruition. That is essentially an empty PD at this point. The, um... In the two thousands, that property received PD zoning. We went all the way through the PD process, had, um, all of the development plans and everything finalized and approved by Planning and Zoning Commission and City Council, but they never pulled building permits. So essentially, it reverts back to PD zoning, but there are no development plans, um, that can be utilized. So should this, should you recommend a resolution of support for this property? Um, they have two choices. They could request a zoning that is appropriate, which would be, or which would allow multifamily apartments. So that's going to be B-two or R-four. Or they could move through the Plan Development Process and just submit their own development plans. Um, but that is, they could not continue on with, with just the PD without the additional, additional approval steps. And then the last property, um, is at the very bottom right of the screen there. And that is Reserve at Appleby Sand. And that property is entirely zoned R-one, single-family residential. I want to make sure to note here that your recommendation of approval, or recommendation of resolutions and support, sorry, um, is an entirely separate process than a zoning change. That is a completely separate legal process. So in theory, you could potentially support a project, um, and then hear a zoning change later and have a different outcome. Um, that's not a great idea. It's probably a good idea to consider zoning during this process. Um, but just know that, um, the two are, are completely separate. Just because you support or do not support a project does not mean that, that you would have to, um, continue on with that in the zoning change process. Our comprehensive plan, um, does discuss housing. Um, housing is, is a big issue, not just in Nacogdoches. Um, in the views of these developers, housing, um, these projects could, could address some of Nacogdoches's housing issues. Housing affordability and growth is important in Nacogdoches. And as you can see in our current comp plan, I'm not going to read all of those. Um, but it, it was discussed in the, in the current comp plan and I'm sure it will be discussed in the future comp plan, specifically, um, after that Housing Need Study is completed. So we do, um, we did request that the, all of the applicants attend a public meeting in, um, on February second, which is tomorrow evening at five-thirty at the Recreation Center. I'm going to give the same presentation, so I apologize to anybody that has to hear it twice. Um, just to make sure everyone in the room is educated and understands the process, then each developer will be given about ten minutes to provide their specific information to the community. And then we're going to have a question and answer period at the end. Um, we'll have comment cards, so folks can write down their questions and pass them in, in case they, so they don't forget. Um, but we are hoping, um, to get a lot more information about each specific development out to the public at that time and answer questions and also allow the developers to hear some of the wishes of the community. Um, several of the developers we spoke with in our virtual meetings indicated that they had somewhat changed their plans in response to community requests. They had provided some amenities that the community was interested in. And so I would encourage our community to, to make those, um, wishes heard during that public meeting. Then on February twenty-second, all of the proposed applications, all of the developers will come back before you and present their case to you. They, they will give you information about themselves, um, probably a lot of the same information they're presenting on February twenty-second. Um, they will probably provide information about all of their developments in Texas, their past history, um, their style of management, their screening of their residents and, and specific information like that. So at the February twenty-second meeting, you will be asked to, to approve or to not approve resolutions, um, supporting these developments. Then on March first, the applicants for each project have to submit their final applications to the state. Um, the state meets and reviews those through, through a public board and that happens in July of twenty-twenty-two. And then they have until the end of twenty-twenty-four to complete their construction. So your options on the twenty-second include adopting a resolution of support, adopting a resolution of no objection, adopting a resolution of opposition, or taking no action. So a council vote in opposition to these projects won't necessarily stop a project. It just means that it won't score as well as other projects that might receive a resolution of support, including the one project that is in Lufkin. Um, so if you did not support an application, but the Lufkin City Council did, um, that Lufkin project would probably receive more points and vice versa. If Lufkin didn't, didn't support one, um, and you did, then, then Nacogdoches would, would likely have that project. The lack of points means other applications fare better in the competition, is what it boils down to. Um, in addition, they could also build the project and just use a different financing mechanism. They could shift and not necessarily do, um, a low-income housing tax credit project. They could build a traditional multifamily project and, and just seek other forms of financing. So I think specifically, um, in the properties that are zoned B-two general business, it's important to keep that in mind, that that is a permitted use by right. And, um, the financing doesn't necessarily affect that development. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay. I would ask for public comment first. Anybody want to speak? We will have, again, an opportunity tomorrow night. Yes, yes, sir. Come forward, please.
How are you doing?
Great.
My name is Jeff Reed and, um, you know, I've been in Nacogdoches since nineteen seventy-eight and I'm all for progress, but I want sustainable progress. And, um, I'm specifically speaking on the property on Appleby Sand. It's zoned R-one and we want to keep it that way. That is a, a single-family neighborhood. It's been that way forever and we want to keep it that way. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Oh, sure.
I'm Russ Havard, also live on Walnut in the Appleby Sand area. And I would just like to say the same thing. We would like to keep it as zoned R-one.
I understand. Thank you. Yes, ma'am?
I'm Charmaine Dickout. And my question is, it's, is only one developer going to be approved for one unit? Like either it'll be the senior citizen or it'll be family dwelling? It's not multiples?
Can you answer that, Lisa?
The council has the option to adopt a resolution in support of any, all, or none of, of the developments. Um, and then each, to make sure I answer your question, each development is, is either restricted to elderly residents or it is not. And there is only one development which was not restricted to elderly residents.
But all of the developers that are coming, they could develop it?
I don't think I understand.
Well, do you know what the allocation is for our region? Do, do you have an idea of what, what that would be?
Yes. Um, I believe it was around a million dollars. And so only one application will get funded in our region.
And say the one there at, on, on Maro, I mean, at Maroni and on University Drive is an eleven-million-dollar project and so...
Okay, that answered it.
It looks like that would eat it up.
Yes.
Anybody else? Sure. Yes, ma'am. Mm-hmm. Yes.
My name is Colin Ortiz. I live on Carroll Street in the Kenbrook area. And my question is, um, there have been a couple of different interviews and such where y'all have talked about zoning not being a priority. But that doesn't necessarily mean that you won't consider rezoning. Or have y'all decided as a council already that you're not likely to consider rezoning any of these areas?
I can only say the rezoning is a separate process. Um, they can certainly consider current zoning when they consider a resolution of support um, and, and wait their, your decision based on whether or not a property currently has the correct zoning. Um, but that is a separate process that would have to happen later. Does that answer your question?
Not exactly.
Okay.
I, I guess my question is more of what's come out, like in interviews and such, where y'all have not prioritized zoning. My question is, are you saying that you reserve the right to rezone if you choose to? Or are you saying we can, as a community, hope that you're not going to rezone? Especially right there on Maroni, we don't have apartments.
You and I have spoken and you might have spoken to Ms. Bellinger and we've given you our opinion, but we, the council as a group can't speak to this tonight. We would be, in essence, making the decision, so w- we, we can't do that. But, but I mean, I think that a zoning change that far would be difficult.
Okay.
Uh, uh, the project, you know, that's right there, that sits right on Kenbrook.
And I, I think it would be fair to ask the city manager also his view on this, so...
Well, I've been very, I've been very blunt with, with our, with, with those developers as we met with them. And, uh, just going through the experiences we've had the last sixteen, seventeen, eighteen months, uh, going from a very low-dense type, uh, zoning to a higher-dense type zoning is going to be a difficult, uh, difficult to recommend from a staff perspective. Again, at the end of the day, there is a planning and zoning process, uh, to the commission. Uh, there's a city council process, but from a staff recommendation, I think it would be a challenge.
Thank you. Yes, yes, ma'am?
Hi, excuse me. I'm Becky Reed and I live on Walnut. You saw my hobby. My huge worries are that piece of property that sits on Appleby Sand Road is the highest point in that area. It is nothing but a downward grade. That is sandwiched in the middle of our neighborhood. And so anything that is going to be built, concreted, is going to run to both sides and it's going to run down and flood the houses all the way around it. We already have a problem. We live on the Little Hill in Walnut. We are the original hill that was built on in nineteen forty-nine. And anyone who was to the side of us or behind us when it rains on our Little Hill, it runs all the way down. So I can't imagine a hill that probably has a sixteen, seventeen, eighteen percent grade on it that is not going to flood out everyone around it because it's a horseshoe. Um, the other worry is that we have, there's a wet area at the bottom of that. Have these developers walked this land? I mean, it's a huge wet swampy sucker back there. And so what's going to happen is when they concrete all that, there's still no stoppage and it's going to run into that bottom where that other piece of land matches our little street right there. And it's going to flood that piece of that hill. And that's very worrisome, not to mention up on that hill, when you go to pull out, you can't see traffic going left or right. We have that problem coming off Walnut now when we turn onto Appleby Sand. It's right through in that curve and you pray. Because, you know, in about six seconds, somebody's whizzing going to work and they may get in the lane and they may not. But my worry is the flood. We already have French drains at our place. Our neighbor, two streets over, have French drains from theirs because the runoff is coming from Redbug in the back of their house. Our neighbor's house has been flooded off Colonial because the rain that came in, came down the driveway and flooded all their house. That's our biggest worry as far as just taking care of the environment. It's going to flood us out. And they, I don't think they can stop it. So then what? So then what happens to all our homes? No one's going to want to buy a home when you disclose it's been flooded three times. So that's my big worry.
I hope you'll be with us tomorrow night and ask those questions. I think they're great.
Oh, I will, because it scares me to death, because, you know, we in a P row sometimes down there. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Chris Engler, just make a comment on what she was talking about. Every square foot of concrete and asphalt that we put is one less square foot that cannot absorb water, and that water has to go somewhere. That isn't what I wanted. But she just said that, and I wanted to make a comment on that. My question, and if you would speak to this, on the elderly housing, what is elderly? Is that fifty-five and up?
I'll let I'll let our expert answer that question.
It is restricted to fifty-five and above.
If they have a family, does everybody have to be fifty-five and up?
I believe, and I will double-check with the developers tomorrow, but I believe the restrictions require at least one family member be fifty-five and above. Hold on. Unless the property is affirmatively marketed as a senior development, and then they must require everyone be fifty-five and above in the unit.
So it is possible that a person could be fifty-five and be taking care of two of their grandchildren there. Yes?
Thank you. The, yes. However, if the property is marketed as a senior development, which most of these likely will be, then they would have to, everyone in the unit would have to be fifty-five and above. Several of the developers did indicate that that would be the case, that that they would be marketing to fifty-five and above. And if they come out and say this is an elderly restricted development, you must be fifty-five and above, then everyone in the unit has to be fifty-five and above. I would encourage everyone at the meeting tomorrow night to specifically ask that question and get that confirmation from the developers.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? Yes, ma'am.
I'm Cynthia Tolson, and I think this is probably directed towards you, or I don't know. Do we have a need for for any of the low-income housing that is being asked for? You had mentioned how Nacogdoches is already a low or poverty, more poverty-stricken area. Are we just inviting more poverty in, or do we have people that need those places right now? Because they're living somewhere right now, aren't they?
Yes and no. The, I will say, each each one of the developments, as part of their application to the state, is required to provide a market study that shows there is a need for this type of housing. I cannot state the specific need for housing in Nacogdoches because I don't have the data. I can tell you that we do have a lower-income population. We do have an aging population. And so is it possible that there is a need for elderly restricted, lower-income housing in Nacogdoches? Yes. Do I know what that specifically is? I can't can't promise you what those specific needs are until we see those market studies. And we certainly will ask, have asked the developers for copies of those, and we'll provide them to the council and and provide them publicly on the city's website when those are available.
I think that's data that would need to be collected on if there's even a need for this kind of housing, because there might not be.
Good question for tomorrow night for the for the developers. Need to prove that.
I'm Vicki Boatman, and I have a question. We have assisted living homes here in town, but to my knowledge, we don't have an assisted living home for low-income people that are fifty-five and older or sixty-five and older. So my question is, is there money available for assisted living for low income? And why is that something that nobody's looking at?
I can't say I know the answer to that. Just as a reminder, tonight, this is an outcome of applications that have come to the city. So this is not, the city didn't recruit these, so it was not the case of the city seeing a need for this and going and seeking it out. So in your example, I would say if someone was interested in that or if the city council felt that this was a topic we should pursue, a market study needs to be done. Or if a private developer were interested in that, they would create a market study to determine if there was a need for that. We don't have that data today, though.
Anyone else? Okay. Counsel, comments? Mr. Anderson?
I will probably hold any questions or comments until after hearing from developers tomorrow evening and and sort of compiling all the the data that they have.
Ms. Fisher?
Same, mayor.
Okay. Ms. Bellinger?
I do have several questions, and some of these I actually probably already have the answer to, but I think it's helpful for council and for other people to have it before, even before hearing them tomorrow. And then, so one is about this market study. The market study will not be available until after the resolution. Is that is correct, right?
I apologize. I thought it would be available before, but it sounds like you have different information, so.
No, 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 I thought, I I thought when we were talking with them that that the market study came after March first, but maybe it doesn't. We'll we'll be able to see that market study before. I'm sorry, I'm not.
I would hope that we would. We can get that clarified.
Okay, that's that is something I'd like to know. Okay. And we'll, I'm not sure what amenities they'll be presenting tomorrow, but will they, will we have an opportunity, or will they have an opportunity after they hear the questions and the thoughts of of the people of Nacogdoches? Will they have an opportunity to change and add amenities or proposed amenities?
Yes, they they can change and add any amenities that they want to at any time. What they have provided to the city and to the state right now are their scored amenities. If if the community, for example, said we would really love a community room, so our neighborhood association could meet in this complex, there, the community is more than welcome to suggest that. The council is more than welcome to suggest that. The developer hopefully will hear that, and they are welcome to add it to their development, and I hope they would. But it won't show up in their formal state application, because it's not something that the state scores them on.
How they market, is that something that we can hold them to after we have already given our resolution?
I think we can, we can attempt to monitor it. That is really something that would be enforced, and I'm going to look at the city attorney here. That is not something that we would enforce, the affirmatively marketing senior housing.
Depends on whether it made it into a deed restriction or not. There will be some requirements that will be required to be in a deed restriction, and then we would have standing to enforce those, but so would the state. So the representations on how they will mark it, the primary enforcement official will be housing and community development. But we would also have standing if it's in the deed restrictions.
Is there a way for us to make sure it's in a deed restriction?
I don't know the answer to that, sitting here today.
But you will know.
And some, something that that may alleviate some of that concern, they they are required to recertify every year. They get those tax credits. If a property receives tax credits, they receive those credits every single year. And so they have to recertify to the state, which I am assuming goes to the federal government as well. And so if, for example, they had stopped screening all their applicants, and it was easy to prove that the elderly restricted development was no longer, you know, the tenants were all under fifty-five, they would lose their tax credit allocation, which would greatly affect their funding.
I'm looking to.
You're fine.
I think that's all I have. I don't, I I I, I'm waiting to hear from all the specific developers. But I have like a zillion questions, but that's all. Oh, I have one more, a very, very important one. Could you please post your PowerPoint?
Yes.
And I know it's not part of this agenda, so if you would, and where will it be put? I have a hard time finding what we post sometimes.
We will certainly, we will, we will add a link on Facebook so that folks can find it. I can't tell you right now exactly where it will end up on the city's website, but we will be sure that on Facebook there is a direct link to that PowerPoint.
And will you also send it to us and then send the link to us as on the city council so we can share? Thank you very much.
Yes, definitely.
All right. Thank you. Look forward to tomorrow night.
Thank you.
All right, we will move on to number four, open forum. And I think I do have one person, Ms. Knee House?
I think I'll wait.
Okay. Okay, good, good, great. No, sir. I'm sorry. You can't. We do, as a part of open forum, would like to hear from our chief, Kiplinger. He's going to tell us a little bit about what he's expecting with the with the coming storm.
Mayor and council, thank you for having me tonight. Keith Kiplinger, your fire chief. We're all a little bit sensitive to storms after last February, and so I wanted to give you a little update of what we're looking at. We are going to receive some rain beginning tomorrow and leading into Thursday, and some extremely cold weather Thursday leading into the weekend. And so we fully expect, we fully expect that there is a potential that we'll have some freezing precipitation. As of now, the weather service is keeping it all just one county north and one county west of us. And so we aren't expecting to have any significant accumulations. We're certainly not expecting the mega storm. That said, we have this week gone through all of our, all of our plans. We've reached out to all of our partner agencies, Godtell, the Red Cross, to make sure that we're all prepared and all ready if we do get a prolonged period of power outages over the weekend due to the the combination of the of the rain and the the potential for icing, so.
Okay.
At this point, we're not expecting anything horribly dramatic. It's just going to rain a couple of days and be cold for a couple of days, so.
Okay. Anybody, any questions? Amelia, Ms. Fisher, I'm sorry. Okay. All right. Thank you, sir. Appreciate your report. All right, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Are there items that need to be removed from the consent agenda, any, any council person? Okay, I'm assuming by your silence there are none. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Moved, Mr. Anderson. Do I have a second? Mr. Bolden, thank you. Any more discussion? Those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. All right. We'll move to number seven on the regular agenda, and we'll receive an end-of-year report from Visit Nacogdoches Convention and Tourism Director.
Good evening, mayor and council. Sherry Chaney Morgan, Executive Director for the Nacogdoches Convention and Visitors Bureau. Here to present the end-of-year report for our year ending two thousand and twenty-one. On the first slide, looks like it's slow to load in, but it's our Board of Directors. For Visit Nacogdoches, Shay Reese is our chairperson, Damon Ruckel is our vice chair, Wanda Mouton is our secretary treasurer, and then John McLaren, Sarah Drake, Larry King, and Alex Marantz. And that comprises our seven-member Board of Directors. We started the year with ten specified goals that we wanted to target and work towards. The first was to see an increase in hotel occupancy. A strong month for us in hotel occupancy is about sixty-one percent. Our target was to see fifty percent, and our actual was fifty-one point six. That was an average over twelve months. So that was a goal that we met. The second goal was to increase our social media following. We were looking, targeting an increase of twenty-five thousand over all of our platforms, and that would include Facebook, where we already have well over a hundred thousand followers. But we were looking to increase Instagram and Twitter as well. We did see an increase of nineteen, I don't have my glasses on. We were really close to meeting our goal, but fell short, so we are back on working at that. Our third goal was to increase visits to our website. We were looking for three hundred thousand, and we surpassed that at three hundred and seventy-three thousand. We also wanted to see an increase in usage of the Visit NAC app. We targeted a fifty percent increase. We saw a hundred and fourteen percent increase. And as a side note, I attribute most of that to Mayor Mize, because he really talks up our app everywhere he goes. So a lot of that is for him. And then an increase in number of volunteers. Our target was fifty. With losing some and gaining some, we still only ring in at thirty volunteers, so we fell short of that, and we're addressing that in this year. Our sixth goal was to increase the visitor traffic, visitor-centered foot traffic. We targeted six thousand. Our actual was eight point six thousand, and that was a goal met. An increase in request for information. Our target was a thousand. Our actual was nine hundred and eighty, again, close, but we fell short. Increase and encourage travel reviews. That's part of our metrics given in our contract of service is to maintain our visitor input. We targeted a twenty-five percent increase. We only saw a five percent increase. So again, we are working on that again this year. The ninth goal was into increase number and frequency of music and cultural events. Our target was a twenty-five percent increase. Our actual was a thirty-three percent increase, so that was a goal met. And then finally, an increase in our total digital impressions. We targeted a goal of five hundred thousand. Our actual was one point eight six million. Our main activities this year, we marketed through the shutdowns due to COVID. We broadened the scope of our work to include special events permitting for the city. We attended the Texas Association of Convention and Visitor Bureau Annual Conference in Conroe this year, and we brought home three awards, two in marketing, one in pandemic response. And then lastly, we initiated regional collaborations with Lufkin. I've included a key events timeline. It includes starting off in October, sort of from scratch, not really knowing how the recovery was going to happen. We did move from a post of strictly programming for visitors and guests to really looking at the needs of our community and addressing some of those needs of cabin fever and just feeling locked in and trying to find ways that they could safely get out and engage in the community. In December, we started doing drive-in movies called NAC at Night at the airport, and we did those every weekend, weather permitting, and that was a huge success. That was actually the award we won for pandemic response. In March, after the storm, we had to account for the damage done to the Azalea Trail, which, as you might know, it isn't a specific trail, but it is our highest tourist season. So we had to look for different things to market during that time. April was when we officially took on special events permitting. May saw the first of three full moon summer concerts in Festival Park, and that met with huge success. In June, we saw the return of the Blueberry Festival. In July, we welcomed new board members. In August was when we attended the conference. And then in September was when we hosted Reach Across the River, which was a tourism summit with our counterparts in Lufkin. Our highlights, we saw a total tourism recovery of twenty-three percent. At our worst, we were at a negative twenty-four point six, and so we recovered and then some. Collaboration has been the highlights. At the encouragement of city leadership and management of both Lufkin and Nacogdoches, we have been looking for ways, big and small, to collaborate with Lufkin. Music and film, we created an effective business model for concerts, how we can make concerts work in Festival Park. And then we all. And then we also had um a site selection from um the Yellowstone prequel. And we were able to satisfy that and get selected. And as storykeepers, uh, last year was our twenty-fifth anniversary of being an independent 501(c)(6) out from underneath the Chamber of Commerce. And as a result, uh, or to commemorate that, we did love letters to NAC. We published that book successfully, and then we also did a cookbook. Budget overview, it was hard to budget again because we didn't know what was happening, and we assumed new responsibilities that we didn't budget, but the bottom line is, we did pretty well. We made more money than we spent. And uh we've learned a lot from that, and we've changed how we're going about it this year. So when we know better, we do better. Special event breakdown, we're gonna get into more of this in the next presentation, but we had seventy-seven total special events, fourteen medium size, six large scale, and fifty-eight others. And then, this is a listing of our media inserts through Hancock. Our total marketing theme was um what I call voyeuristic. It's um from your point of view, so it's the picture of a motorcycle on a country road, and you can imagine yourself at the wheel, is it a wheel? Handles, I don't know. Um, driving the motorcycle. Um, or a hand that's filled with blueberries, assuming that it's your hand. So um each of our insertions through Hancock reflected that overall theme of imagine yourself in Nacogdoches. And we tried to educate people on how best to engage with Nacogdoches. We also had some in-house insertions and messaging. We did a cooperative ad with Palestine and Tyler and Texas Monthly. We partnered with the Fredonia Hotel for a feature in Southern Travel. No, that's not true. That was in Food and Travel. Um, Southern Travel was a digital publication that just did a cold call with us, but it helped us to reach a different segment, to get outside of our five-city drive market to extend into the traveling southeast. Food and Travel was a beautiful article, it highlighted the Fredonia and a lot of our other assets as well. And then probably um something that moved the needle the most was with Manor House. It's a Canadian group. They um specifically represent two townhome communities just over the border of dual income, no children, double vaccinated and boosted young professionals. It's in their print publication, we were able to negotiate a right-face read to, and the adjacent left-hand page article was on the reopening of the Canadian border. We were able to get the email addresses and the mailing addresses um and have a video on the elevator, uh, they have like a television in their elevator. And we've actually seen an increase in request for information from Canadians as a result. So that was very affordable, we got a lot of bang for our buck in that. And we also did a social media takeover by a local influencer. She is a woman of color, she was from Nacogdoches, she works in tourism in Shreveport, Louisiana. She took over our platforms and filled them with short-form videos, and our engagement went through the roof, so that was a great experiment. And then we've also been engaging with different travel bloggers. Pardon me. No, I think I'm good. So our goals for 2022. This year, our marketing theme is the faces behind the story. And the first one has already ran in the November Texas Monthly, which is the barbecue edition. And you could line up three briskets next to one another, you wouldn't really be able to tell which one came from Nacogdoches, they're gonna have a smokering. They're gonna look delicious. So our ad featured Brendan Todd and his wife and his children, and it told the story of why, why his barbecue, his passion, and the legacy that he's trying to build for his children. So that is gonna be our overarching marketing theme, is the story behind our assets. Our goal is to continue to strengthen the Between the Pines collaboration with Lufkin, the rebranding, revitalization, and training component of our volunteer program. Onboard all qualified, short-term rentals for hot tax remittance. Uh, just a few weeks ago, our Board of Directors um okayed an execution of a contract with a third party called RentalScape that will help us identify those short-term rental owners so that we can get everybody in, into the finance system and remitting as they should be. Contract with county-owned lodging properties for marketing purposes so that those that um don't pay in and remit for our services, we can find a fair market value for them to pay for um representation on our websites and lodging landscape. This is the year that our website goes out to request for proposals, so we'll be switching to a provider to lower expense and to expand usable functionality for us. And specifically, that's going to be ticketing function, which will allow us to um bundle up packages. Reinforce inclusivity in our servicing, marketing, and programming efforts. And lastly, focus attention on our relationship with TripAdvisor on how we can better not only encourage visitors to leave reviews, but also look for ways that we can highlight the reviews left for our stakeholders. That's it.
Okay. Any comments before um her next report? Any comments now or after the next reporter?
I just wanted to congratulate you on the awards.
Oh, thank you.
That's really nice.
Those are, those awards mean a lot because they are um, were selected by our peers.
And, and that's for the whole state?
Mm-hmm.
We have, wow.
In our budget category, so.
And I know you're gonna say other things, but I still love those full moon concerts, I just think they're so great.
Thank you.
And the uh, the meeting, uh, ten goals, and you met six of them and was close in the other ones. During turbulent times, and I'm just totally surprised. But one of the things that I'm surprised about is the social media.
Mm-hmm.
It was only nineteen percent of, and during that time, I would've thought it'd been a little higher.
I would think so too. Um, but I think it might be, uh, you know, Facebook, we, we know how to do that. We could do that with our eyes closed, but I think it's figuring out the algorithms on those other two platforms and what it's gonna take to move the needle on increasing followers on that.
And what do you think the issue when not responding to reviews?
You know, I think there was a time where that was really popular. I think before social media became so prevalent, I think we looked at TripAdvisor and um, what are some other ones?
Yelp.
Yelp, I think, you know, that was a popular thing to do. I think now people really sort of crowdsource their information, and they'll put, hey, I'm going to Franklin, Tennessee, tell me five things I have to do there. And so that's how they get their recommendations, and they'll come back and they'll say, oh, we had the great, greatest time. If you ever go to Nacogdoches, you have to go to the Fredonia. So I think people are just engaging with, with that activity differently. But there's still, I just read today, TripAdvisor celebrated its one-billionth review. So clearly, people are still using them. I just think we need to relook at how we're interacting with them and engaging with them.
Thanks to you and your team doing a great job, thank you.
Thank you so much, and they're here today, in the audience.
Thanks for listening to some of us that bug you.
Never, never bug, I, that's a problem I wanna have, is people that care enough to have an opinion on what we're doing.
Well, I'd say, let's, let's move to B, receive a report on the status of special events from Convention and Visitors Bureau.
All right. So, the overview of 2021 permitted special events, the asterisk is there because we only took over in April, and so that's when we started to collect information. You're looking at three pie charts. The first one shows uh special events size breakdown, so small, which is one to two hundred and forty-nine people, medium, two hundred and fifty to five hundred, and large, five hundred plus. The second one shows special events by type breakdown. So there's music, family, private events, community, and cultural. And that last one references, we have five marketing pillars that um we have fleshed out from visitor reviews of why people come to Nacogdoches. For 2021, we showed seventy-seven permitted events. Total cost incurred for those was around forty-six thousand um with an average cost per event of around six hundred dollars. Not every event cost, and some of the costs are trash receptacle drop-off, um, the pulling of barricades and removing those, security. And if the great staff of Brian Bray and, and Tommy Stanley, if they need to mow or treat for ants. Um, one of the costs this year was dropping internet lines in Festival Park, that was about thirty-five hundred. So um, one way or another, there are costs involved. And for 2022, anticipated special events, again, we have the three pie charts that show the uh, the size breakdown, the type breakdown, and the marketing pillar breakdown. So far, we have three hundred and sixty-one anticipated permitted events, thirty-one events that are coming in from the Expo Center. And SFA, we chose just to isolate athletics because we know that that is um probable, that is the area, along with fine arts, uh, that is of interest to both student and traveler and off, off-campus audiences. I don't know what happened to the graphic. What you should be saying. We subscribe to an estimated economic impact calculator through Destinations International, and it allows us to input data on different events to show what the economic impact is for our community. So I had DUDAT barbecue as an example for lost business. So we lost about forty-five to sixty thousand dollars by having DUDAT canceled. That would've, would've been um the direct business uh relay of that. And for property tax, I believe the high end of that was nineteen hundred for tax. And we do, we run economic impact estimates after every event, whether they're canceled or whether they go through and that goes into our file system. Um, the next one, still not gonna show. Um, I could, uh, okay, the next one was Joanna the Name, Texas.
Horse Association.
Mm-hmm. That one had, that made us, uh, I believe it was around fifty thousand dollars. And then the last one was gonna be Blueberry Festival, and of course, that was just under half a million dollars. So um, the moral of the story is, we have the tools. I just can't show them to you on this presentation sadly, but we do have the tools to look at and it's okay. Uh, estimated economic impact, and because that's bought with our hot tax dollars, that's something that we can do for other groups. If anybody wanted to come back in in their post-analysis of their event and get the estimated economic impact, we'd be able to do that for them. Okay. And then key directives for special events, we want to build diversity in special events. We want to pay attention to how closely our event offerings align with the needs and makeup of our community as well as the expectations, education, and interest of our visitors and guests. We want to save time and cost, so seek out efficient cost-cutting measures as well as potential sources of funding for programming. Examples of this would be, um, if it's gonna be park usage, to bundle those together so we're not having to treat more than once. We can um go ahead and mow and get it company-ready and safe for a series of events instead of having to do it one-off. Align complementary events, aligning like events on sequential days not only helps save money, but it potentially can generate more hotel occupancy and sales tax revenues. We also are looking specifically to address consistency in street time closures so that while we are helping events grow, we are not limiting our, especially downtown business merchants, we're not handicapping them and, and making it harder for them to do business. And then also addressing parking downtown as well. So that's gonna become part of the, the permitting process. That'll be a line item on the permit, is what is your parking plan going to be? So that we can get ahead of any potential parking problems. Collect, save, and store data. Collect meaningful data that can be shared to strengthen return on investment and measure key performance indicators. Create and keep two clear, concise, and consistent information flows between all contributing departments and parties. And then lastly, Between the Pines-Lufkin collaboration, continue to look for ways in which to collaborate with Lufkin in order to diversify our audience as well as share in cost while marketing our region. And I believe you were handed um a binder. Those are all the events that we know of to date. And there's a QR code on the front of that that will take you to a landing page on our website, and it's a live, living being, and so it's gonna change. Um, but if ever you want to get an up-to-date outlook on events that are coming up, you can scan that QR code and it'll take you, and you can sort by month.
That's great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any comments for Sherry?
I just wanted to say that you're um, that you did attach your PowerPoint to um, to the agenda and that those slides that
They showed up there.
They're, they are on our PowerPoint, so we all can see them, and they're pretty impressive, so.
It, it is neat to see, I'm a, I love a spreadsheet, um, I make no bones about it. Uh, but it is interesting, it's just kinda for your gee whiz bag to go through and look, and it's pretty self-explanatory. Um, but to see how one small rock really does ripple out and make a big difference.
When you're looking at sort of future goals and so forth, especially for numbers of events, types of events, things like that, are you sort of uh building off of historical data locally or sort of larger market forecasts, or kind of a combination of the two?
I think a combination of the two. Um, ideally, we would love to get the need, we need an event on um Native Americans, and find a group that that topic sort of yee-haws with, and to match them up and then help facilitate that so that we don't take on the onus of being the event planner the whole time, but that we can really engage the public in a meaningful way so that they can put on that event. Um, but having those pie graphs and seeing how it all jogs out, um, it does help us if we really need to look out and find a particular type of event so that we can fill in the blank or that we can create that weekend that we're always looking for, those multiple days that translate in um to hotel stays.
Uh, I like seeing the data too, so. Thank you very much for the presentation and for always setting the bar high and, and keeping it as high as possible as, as Mayor Mice said, during some uh pretty challenging conditions over the last couple of years, so.
Well, we, we thank you for your continued support.
Okay, we will move to your next item. C, consider a resolution closing East Main Street for the Old Town Rig Down Event, September sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-two through September eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Oh, Sherry, I thought you were gonna give us this one too. Okay.
She decided to switch out with me, so y'all got
She decided to switch out with me, so y'all got to talk to me today too. Mayor Council, Jessica Sal, Community Service Assistant Director and Main Street Manager. So today, we're gonna talk about a resolution for closing East Main Street for the Old Town Rig Down event. Normally, a request like this would be on your consent agenda because council is being asked to consider a street closure, which y'all see pretty often for events. We brought this one today on regular agenda because this is a brand-new event to Nacogdoches that we're very excited about and wanted y'all to hear about it from us. So the event is the Old Town Rig Down, which is essentially an eighteen-wheeler truck show downtown Nacogdoches. So the plan is for September sixteenth through eighteenth to have roughly a hundred eighteen-wheeler trucks downtown. Um, and this is just the front cab portion, not the large trailer portion, um, 'cause there's no way we could fit a hundred downtown with things like that. They will be parked somewhere else. So essentially, this is, if you think about like an antique car show where you walk around, you see all these great antique cars, this is the equivalent in an eighteen-wheeler truck show. These are trucks that are tricked out, have lights, all the bells and whistles. These are kind of the show ponies of the trucking world. So these trucks will be downtown. The plan is to have a Friday move-in. So the streets will be closed starting eight AM on Friday, September sixteenth. The trucks move in. That's a whole spectacle because that's, you know, a delicate little dance to try to get everybody in there. So the street shut down at eight AM for truck move-in. Friday evening will be a light show. So once, you know, it's dark downtown, all the trucks turn the lights on. And they invite the public to come walk around, see these, um, trucks that people have spent hundreds of thousands of dollars on. Saturday is an event similar to the Blueberry Festival where there's shopping, there's auctions, there's food, music, just an overall festival downtown. And then an evening concert in festival park right down- right down the hill. And then Sunday is the truck move-out and then opening the streets back up at noon. This event is, um, new to Nacogdoches, but these events are, you know, this is not new overall. These happen in all- all over the state, all over the US. So our event organizers who are also here tonight can answer questions. Anticipate several thousand people downtown in attendance. Our downtown merchants were very excited when they heard this 'cause September is traditionally kind of a dead shopping time. There's not a lot of holidays. People aren't buying for Christmas quite yet. So they were excited about the idea of several thousand people being essentially delivered to downtown for them. The event organizers do charge vendor fees for any vendor booths put up downtown, and they auction off items live during the event, um, on Saturday. All of the money raised from the vendor booth fees, any proceeds, any donations, anything, um, done from an auction is donated back locally. So rather than having it to some bigger hospital somewhere or some national organization, they donate those proceeds back into a Nacogdoches organization, which we're very excited about. This event was presented to the Main Street Advisory Board, who you appoint, and the downtown merchants, which is a non-voting group, but kind of all of our downtown merchants get- get together and talk about events going on. Both the groups fully supported this event. They don't vote to approve events, but they were saying, "Yes, please, let's go forward. How can we help? How can we be involved? How can we plug into it?" So all the groups were very excited about this event. Just to give you a little reference, these are some of the trucks we're talking about. These were two that were in our Nine Flags Christmas Festival, if you saw any of those. So these are not normally the trucks the guys are driving, you know, across the state or across the US. These are kind of the- the show ones. And this is a reference picture of, um, a similar truck show in Perryville, Missouri. You can see trucks parked all around their Main Street Square, people walking around, shopping, strolling, looking at the trucks. So we're anticipating something similar to this in Nacogdoches in September. So I'm happy to answer any questions. And like I mentioned, the event organizers are here to answer any questions you have as well.
Mr. Massey, would y'all care to speak or... You know he does.
I've been holding a question for a long time. I'm Troy Massey, and I just learned tonight, this is my first city council meeting. Unfortunately, I just learned tonight that in a very short ten years that I'm gonna be elderly. I did not know that. I thought it would be at least seventy-five. Put that in the minutes that I- I, at this point, I guess now that we've lowered the bar.
Tell us what you anticipate being able to potentially raise for our community. I don't wanna put you on the spot or anything.
I've got a pretty aggressive goal. And- and in business, I own a couple of businesses. So when I budget, I generally try to be pretty conservative so that I still have to work pretty hard, but that I know I can achieve my goals. I did make the commitment to you and- and, uh, the city manager, Mario, that, um, our goal will be to raise enough money. We'll have very small expenses because we're using public property. The short story is, uh, and- and I'm thinking about this as I'm saying it 'cause it's gonna cost me, but I'm gonna- I'm gonna make the commitment. I'm gonna make the commitment that we raise enough money that we're able to donate enough money to close the gap on the old university building, which is an estimated sixty-thousand-ish. And- and my commitment to that is, if the three of us, Stephen and Tim, if we don't do a good enough job raising money and we're twenty thousand dollars short, then my commitment is that I'll pay the difference. But one way or another, we will be able to go forward with the- with the completion of the, uh, um, old university building now.
You just made my wife very happy.
Now, something else that's special to me because I- I try in my personal life and in business to- to help out underprivileged kids. It's- it's very special to me and my family. My wife and I both grew up very poor. As a second thing, if we can work hard enough that we can achieve that sixty-ish thousand-dollar goal, whatever we have left over, um, and I haven't checked if this is legal or not or whatever, so you can- you can straighten me out if this is not legal. But if we have ten, twenty thousand dollars left over, I wanna get that money to the Boys and Girls Club, and they can use it for whatever they need. But- but the whole point of this is, we- we don't have enough going on in Nacogdoches generally, and I've expressed to- to you guys how special the downtown area is to me. I can't really explain why, I just like it. And- and, um, and so that's why we wanted to do this event. We did brainstorm quite a bit about what we would give the money to. The one thing that- that I- I stand firm on is, there's a lot of good organizations out there that you can give money to and the money goes places that it does do good. And I- I wanna be clear on that. The money does do good, but you- once you write the check, you don't really know where the money went. You know, the- the Shriners Hospital, the Burns Center, you know, um, so many different organizations that do a lot of good for people and kids and underprivileged kids especially. And you could- all you can do is just feel good that- that you know that the money went to a good cause. Our focus here is for you to be able to touch and feel what we raised money for at- at the end of the day.
That's great.
I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Anything from the community? Any- anything from the council?
Looking forward to riding in one of the trucks.
So...
He'll give you a ride.
One thing that- one thing that we wanted to do, 'cause this question probably will come up. We- we did discuss, uh, uh, the mayor and- and Mario and a couple of other guys. We did discuss it would be really cool to have a parade of the trucks with the lights on. We won't be able to do that because it- it'll take all day to get parked to- 'cause you have to line them up and it takes- it's a lot of work and goes into- into parking the trucks. So if we were to do a parade Friday night, we wouldn't have time. And it's- and it's unsafe too for kids going walking around and people walking around. We- we wouldn't be able to do that. So I- I think that question will probably come up. But there'll be a walk-around light show. Friday night and Saturday night, everybody will turn their lights on. What I hope is that, you know, for all the local businesses here, it stimulates, you know, their pocketbooks.
And we do appreciate you meeting with the businesses and- and gaining their support. And- and I know you will support them as the- as the event comes. And, you know, I've heard even stories about you maybe looking to auction something from a business as a part of your auction, so.
Yes, so yes. So we wanna take auction items from the businesses that- that they wish to donate. And when we do our auction on Friday night, um, that's a big part of how we plan to raise money. We've been to many, many events, uh, me and my guys. We've been to many events and it's crazy sometimes what people will spend on the dumbest little items because they're at an auction and the money goes to, you know, this, uh, something- something that's special to them. And as we auction those items, you know, we'll- we'll absolutely, you know, give a- a shout-out to whatever business that is, and that puts their name out there as well.
Thank you. We appreciate you. Look forward to it.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Just, let's mention the, uh, that we did...
I'll let you mention it. You're the one doing this.
We are working, we are, we don't have a- a plan set in stone at the moment, but we are working. Once we shut down, we're working on transportation options and ways of getting those employees and- and/or the elder customers into the downtown from a different parking section. And we're not ruled out yet of using, blocking before the- the parking lot down here across from Goodwill and having that as employee parking for them. And they- it's still a good walking distance, so.
Certainly. Thank you again for that consideration. We- we appreciate that. Okay, nope, yep, no. Do I have a- a motion for C?
Um, I so moved to, uh, adopt the resolution as stated.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Second, Mr. Anderson. Any more discussion? Those in favor, signal by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. All right, that's done. Thank you.
Thank you.
We will move to D. Consider city board appointments. Airport Advisory Board, Building Standards Commission, Health Code Advisory Board, Industrial Development Authority, Main Street Authority Board, and Pine Grove Cemetery Board. The council met over the last two weeks with- with a big number of applicants for these different positions. Where I was overwhelmed, I know we all were, by the people that had interest in our city and- and making it a better place, and it was a very difficult decision. But, uh, I would like to offer these, each of these, uh, uh, boards and these committee members, uh, in the form of a motion. For the Airport Advisory Board, Lucinda McFarland, Kathy Parton, Justin Pitcock, Colin Smith, and Taylor Jones.
Second.
Do I have a second? Mr. Bowlen, any discussion? Those in favor, signal by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Thank you. For Bill- this is a motion for the Building Standards Commission, Travis Davis and Sally Ann Swearingen. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Anderson. Any discussion? Those in favor, signal by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Okay. Health Code Advisory Board, Jennifer Brunt, Lisa Page, Robin Thacker, and Wendy Blunt. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, thank you. Any discussion? Those in favor, signal by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The Industry Development Authority, Miles Bradshaw, Scott Boyer, Wes McKnight. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Anderson, thank you. Any discussion? Those in favor, signal by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Pine Grove Cemetery Board, Shelby DeWitt, LaShan- LaShonda Maxey, and Betty Jacobs. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Those in favor, signal by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Okay, Main Street Advisory Board, Karen Harris, Erin Wyndham, Rebecca Callahan, Miles Bradshaw, Cece Khan, Daniel LeBov and Brett Arant. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Ms. Bellinger. Any discussion? Those in favor, signal by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Okay, we took care of D. Thanks again to all of you who- who applied. Okay, we will pull E. It needs some revision, and we'll see it again at our next council meeting. And with that, we'll move to eight. Executive session. Executive sessions are for the council to receive information and deliberate on matters specified in subchapter D of the Texas Open Meetings Act. Council may reconvene in open session to vote on the matter, deliberation regarding economic development negotiations under Government Code, Section five-five-one-point-oh-eight-seven. Okay, we will step out for a few minutes.
To Texas Government Code, Section, um, five-fifty-one-point-oh-seven-one, we're returning to, uh, leaving executive session, return to regular session at seven forty-one, seven forty-two, with no action. We're adjourned.